I will call our meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I will be calling our Richfield City Council meeting to order of December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, being held virtually via WebEx. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone is able to, please unmute yourself and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, their God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I just had a flashback during that of trying to do that game where you try to tap your head and rub your stomach at the same time. Definitely felt like that. The next item is our open forum. I will pass it to Executive Assistant Kelly Nguyen to let people know how they can participate in the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we've gone back to our virtual meetings, we are still encouraging residents to participate in our open forum. You can call our line here, which is six one two eight six one zero six five one, and you can comment directly in our open forum. You can also email myself ahead of time at K W Y N N at richfieldmn.gov. You can also call my number and leave a message, and we can have your comments read. You can call six one two eight six one nine seven one one.
Thank you so much, Kelly. And I just wanted to clarify, I do believe this is where folks who weren't able to speak up at the Truth in Taxation hearing can also speak up during this time. Is that correct? Right, thank you. So that's also available for folks who wanted to speak. I know we had some glitches at the meeting. So do we have anybody on the line or any emails that came in for the open hearing or open forum, excuse me?
I currently do not have anybody on the line.
Okay, we will wait.
Maria, or I'm sorry, Mayor, I know that there is a little bit of a delay. So if we want to give it just a extra thirty seconds or so.
Perfect. We'll wait a little bit to see if anyone comes in. Thanks. Okay, I'll ask one more time, anyone on the line for the open forum?
Mayor, I do not have anybody on the line.
All right, seeing as we have nobody here for the open forum, I will close the open forum and move to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session of November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, the City Council Meeting of November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, and the Special City Council Meeting of November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Councilmember Whalen, I'll move to approve the minute.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any comments or questions? I'll just add, I want to give a huge thank you to councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem Mary Supple for leading the meetings while I was out of town. Thank you so much, councilmember. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. The minutes have been approved.
So, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we would like to do a verbal roll call with Management Analyst Swanson, if that would be all right?
Of course. And then do we do that for all of the votes for the meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect. All right, so well, it has been, the motion has been made by Councilmember Whalen and seconded in by, it was Councilmember Supple, is that correct? Okay, so if you'd like to do the roll call.
All right, can everyone see and hear me?
Yes.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
That's five ayes.
Perfect, thank you so much. The minutes have been approved. So we have three presentations next on our agenda. The first one is the Sustainability Commission Annual Presentation, given by Amanda Keeper, who is a member on the commission. I'll pass it over to you, Amanda.
My apologies, getting the camera correct. Thank you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and council. Again, my name is Amanda Keeper. I'm the Chair of the Sustainability Mission. I'm excited to share with you some of the great work that the commission has been doing this year. So this is the Sustainability Commission's second year. We met ten times in two thousand and twenty-one, and we had a very productive year and many great opportunities to engage with city staff, council, and community members on a wide range of sustainability issues in Richfield. And I'd like to first acknowledge and thank the city's sustainability team, sustainability specialist Rachel Lindholm, Recreation Services Director Amy Markle, and our new Green Corps member Roxanne Nelson. So we're really grateful for their leadership and all of their hard work this year, implementing the sustainability accomplishments that I'll highlight tonight. And we're also grateful to Councilmember Whalen, our council liaison, for his advice and ideas as we've navigated our role as a relatively new mission. So thank you, council. All right, so here's just a quick overview of Richfield's key sustainability accomplishments from the past year that the commission was able to support and assist with. So we certainly feel that the biggest sustainability success story that we have from this year is the city's transition from open to organized waste collection and the subsequent provision of citywide herb site organics recycling collection for all households. So this was a really big deal for the city. It was a long time in the making. And in getting this effort going, the city and the commission really benefited from years of groundwork that was laid by city staff and various resident-led groups, such as the League of Women Voters, the Richfield Social Justice League, and the Resident-Led Organics Task Force, as well as hundreds of Richfield residents who participated in our organics recycling drop-off site program. So I just wanted to give credit where credit's due for that. A lot of hands went into making this transition happen, and it's a really great thing for Richfield. So commissioners were able to help answer questions on social media and participate in kind of the education efforts for residents. Commissioners have also suggested improvements to the program and asked a lot of different questions that helped guide staff's education and communication efforts for residents. So the program was only initiated in October of this year, and to date, already more than twenty percent of Richfield households have signed up for organics recycling. And we've diverted more than forty-five tons of compostable material from landfills already, and we know that that number is just going to continue to grow as the months go by. So we're really proud of that, and we're proud of Richfield for joining the ranks of other cities and local communities that provide accessible organics recycling to residents and participate in organized waste collection. A few other highlights. So after hearings, some concerns from residents about protecting the city's beautiful mature trees, of which we have many in Richfield, commissioners worked with city staff to initiate a tree preservation policy for the city. So that included hosting some guest urban forestry experts to come speak at one of our commission meetings, where they kind of provided expertise and advice for a tree preservation policy and what that might look like. And after that, commissioners submitted a letter with various policy consideration recommendations to council and city staff. So this is an ongoing effort. It's actually just kind of been really the beginning stages, and we really look forward to continuing to work with city staff on this issue in two thousand and twenty-two. Just a few other things to highlight. So commissioners motioned to support several letters on behalf of the city, including the Minnesota City Coalition's Integrated Resource Plan Letter and the Minnesota Composting Council's Letter to Support Legislation That Would Regulate Compostable Packaging Labeling. The commission also helped to write and approve Richfield's solid waste goals, recommended the city's Energy Action Plan to council after hosting some staff from the Partners in Energy Team to present on the plan. And finally, the commission planned and held two invasive species removal events at Woodlake Nature Center to remove some garlic, mustard, and buckthorn. And that effort was all led by Commissioner Brian Shaw, and we think is a really great example of how, you know, just one commissioner can get a great idea and really run with it and make it a success story. So we're excited to see things like that happening and look forward to more kind of organic ideas and fun events like that maybe happening next year. So that's kind of all of the accomplishments that I wanted to highlight, but I will just take this moment to put in a quick plug for membership for our commission. We do currently have two open commission seats for adult members due to a couple of our members moving outside of Richfield, as well as two youth seats, which have yet to ever be filled. So we encourage community members to apply for the Sustainability Commission before the end of the year. Richfield's made a lot of exciting progress on sustainability efforts in the last few years, so it's really a great time to be on this commission.
Great, thank you so much, Chair Keeper, for that update. Thank you for your leadership and helping do all this work with our Sustainability Commission. It's been great to see you in the role and the work of the Sustainability Commission. You know, I remember a few years ago where there wasn't one, and just to see how much work has been happening with the commission and how many of our residents are so excited about sustainability is super exciting. So thank you for your leadership as the chair as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chair Keeper. Just so exciting to get to work with a Sustainability Commission. I'm most excited and want to highlight, at the last meeting, the group started talking about what, what do we do next? And specifically, lots of commissioners wondering, like, what can we do in addition to what city staff are working on? How can we involve more neighbors in this work? How can we make it more visible to the community? What resources can we create to help the community and their own sustainability efforts and their own households? And so I'm really excited to see that work come to fruition as well. And to anyone listening who's interested, certainly apply for the commission, but also there'll be plenty of opportunities for non-commissioners to get involved too. So I'm excited for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. And then are there other comments or questions? For whatever reason, I cannot see other folks right now, so I'm trying to get back to
Hey, Councilmember, Councilmember, or Mayor, Councilmember Troutman here.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, Commissioner Keeper, it's good to see you. And I remember you were, you were one of the first constituents I ever spoke with in my role as a councilmember. You were one of the first sit-down meetings, talking about your passion and competency and desires to lead in this area of our community, and you've just been better than your word at every turn and stepping up and doing the work and the work that people see and the work that people don't see. And so care of our environment takes, takes many hands, but I just want to recognize yours particularly, and thank you for your leadership, as well as everybody else on the commission. But I just want to recognize that you've been working on these issues even before we have the commission, and we have it in some, in some respects because of your advocacy. So, so please keep it up.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman.
Are there comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmembers Hayford, O'Leary?
I just want to also thank you for your leadership and especially your activism and encouragement around the organics recycling. I saw you a lot on Facebook answering questions and just generating positive excitement about a really positive program, and I'm very excited about that. And I just wanted to say I'm also excited to have the conversation about the tree preservation policy. I think it's something where it can be challenging. A lot of communities go so far that they end up losing out on some of the environmental benefits of new energy efficient housing, because they go so far. On the other hand, we also don't want, you know, a clear-cutting situation where we lose these valuable natural resources. So I'm really excited to have that conversation and hear your ideas for how we can, how we can balance those concerns.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford, O'Leary. Yeah, we're really excited about that, too. Richfield is lucky to have such a beautiful, mature urban canopy, and I think we're kind of long overdue for this policy, so there's a lot of excitement around it, not just on the commission, but definitely from residents, too.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from councilmembers? All right, thank you so much, Chair Keeper, for the update, the annual update, and keep up the good work. Our next presentation is the Civil Service Commission Annual Presentation, given by Commissioner Mary Stratton. I'll pass it to you, Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, my name is Mary Stratton, and I'm president of the Civil Service Commission. And I'm going to get my plug out early. As you know, citizen participation is an important ingredient for good government. This city council has established numerous advisory commissions to encourage citizen participation in city matters, suggest new programs or policies, and to serve as liaisons with the city council. I have been doing this since, I think, two thousand and seventeen, and I've enjoyed every moment of it. And I encourage any resident of Richfield, if you are interested, to look into joining one of the commissions. You can go right to the city website. Now, on to the Civil Service Commission. The first thing we are charged with is the recruitment and screening of firefighter applicants. And we are one of the advisory commissions. However, we differ a little bit from other commissions due to the fact that our duties and authority are actually prescribed by state statutes, specifically Minnesota Statute Section four twenty. The commission is composed of three members who are appointed to three-year terms, and this includes me, Jeffrey Brosick, and our newly-appointed commissioner, James Frichette, who is with us here tonight. Our meetings are held on an as-needed basis throughout the year, except for a state mandated meeting the first Monday of February of each year. This year, the commission met five times in two thousand and twenty-one to address some pretty important matters, and I'll go over them with you quickly. First and foremost, we welcomed Mike Dobish as the fire chief. We certified lists for the fire captain promotion, the assistant fire chief, the fire lieutenant promotion, and firefighter eligibility list, which was done this morning at our meeting. We also discussed education in the Richfield Fire Department, along with goals and priorities for both the department and firefighters. We approved new hiring and testing processes for firefighters and lieutenants. We reclassified the battalion chief to assistant fire chief for Janelle Wood. We promoted Shay Filkowski to assistant fire chief. We welcomed new Commissioner James Frichette. And most importantly, we began discussions regarding short and long-term hiring for diversity in the fire department. Fortunately, we were able to meet in person several times this year to not only touch base with firefighters, Mike, Shay, and Janelle, but to personally thank them for their service to our community. This is my own, my own thoughts and speech here. Firefighters are often the first people we see in a fire or health-related emergency. We, as civil service commissioners, are not only proud of our fire department's response time, but also the professional care and concern that each member of the department affords our valued citizens on what may actually be one of the worst days of their lives. So I want to thank the fire department once again for the service they provide to our community, and thank the city council for the opportunity to provide an update with this yearly report, and I'm happy to provide answers to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Stratton. What a great presentation. And again, thank you to you for your leadership as well and supporting our fire department. That was a lot of different changes in the past year that you supported and helping lead, and we're very proud of our fire department. We are definitely leading in a lot of departments. I've had folks email me from other departments telling me that they have either been mentored by or supported by or coached by staff from our fire department. So I'm very, very proud, and we all know our residents love our fire as well. So thank you, Mary, for your presentation. Thank you for your leadership. Other questions, comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to thank you and all of the other commissioners. I know a lot of people don't know about the Civil Service Commission, and you do a lot of important behind-the-scenes work, and so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Troutman?
It's just that I have a slightly personal question. Commissioner Stratton, do you have a, do you have a family member, Scott Stratton, by any chance?
There are a lot of Strattens, but we do not have a Scott Stratton, that I know of.
Like, a grade school classmate from Richfield here. I was just curious.
Oh, well, we're from Virginia, the state of Virginia, so we might read it up here.
I appreciate your service regardless.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for President Stratton? Councilmember Whalen?
Just a quick thank you again to you and the commission's flexibility, especially the, the fire department's flexibility through all of the changes this year. It's, it's one thing that I don't think I've ever heard a single resident have any complaints or concerns about the fire department. I've heard really great things, lots of appreciative stories, and so just really am thankful and grateful for all of the work that you continue to do, to do together, and love hearing to the ways that you're continually thinking about sort of the forward-looking, how do we make sure that we continue to train and educate our department as they need to keep growing in their own careers, as well as how do we keep diversifying and looking more like the, the community we serve? And so appreciate both the very basic, ongoing, we need to fight fires, but also the, the deeper questions that you're, you're asking and wrestling with.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. Other comments or questions? Thank you to our commissioners and to our chief who are here with us tonight for the presentation. Our last presentation is the presentation of the Edwina Garcia Community Builder Award and Proclamation to Maureen Skalia. I know that we have guests here today to honor Maureen. I will pass it to La Jefa Edwina Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor and council. You know, you ask, what's community builder? Well, a community builder, as far as I'm concerned, it's the foundation of this city. They're the builders. You know, we have staff and we have council, but the bottom line is the foundation that we have. And these are people that get involved almost from day one of their residency. And they get involved usually at the school level with our kids, then they get involved, you know, with scouts and, and, you know, and then the schools and the whole works. So it's, 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 it's really a constant investment and devotion to the city. And I am just, I'm very proud that the, the two members of the community that have won, won the award are doers. They don't know how to say no. Maureen will admit to that. She doesn't know how to say no. But, you know, it's through their efforts that the basics is the foundation of this city, and that's who the community builders are. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Edwina, for sharing a little bit more about why Maureen was nominated and selected by the committee and what the annual award is about. I will pass it to our award recipient, Maureen Skalia, if you want to share a little bit about your work and service here in Richfield. Looks like you're on mute still. Let's see. Yep, here we go.
Oh, I have to, I don't know, I'm muted. Okay. Um, it started with all the kids, with the kids, with, you know, everything from Little Lee all the way up to Band Boosters, honored to march in the London Day Parade back in nineteen ninety-eight. And then it just kind of snowballed from there. I think the most, one of the first and probably most fun things I did was my involvement with the street dance and as being part of the Fourth of July Committee. That was something that was to be for all of Richfield. It was a very cheap event, and lots of people attended. I think we hit six thousand people a couple of times, and it was just a wonderful thing. Well, and the next thing I knew, I was on commissions. I had the honor of being on the Community Service Commission, and I led the master park plan during one of the years. And then I was on the planning commission, and I was also on liaison to the Transportation Commission. And to say the least, those were very educational. And then throughout the whole time period, I was with the League of Women Voters, serving lots of different roles. I had the honor of moderating inside the issues for nineteen years and just really an organization that I loved. It's nonpartisan in terms of candidates, but very partisan and passionate about studying and endorsing issues. Another organization I've been associated with a long time is Meals on Wheels in Richfield. I've really enjoyed that. And then probably another favorite thing has been often on my work with schools. I enjoy working with youth and just so lucky to have been able to work as classroom attendant, actually with Mary Supple for a couple of years. So that's just a part of what I've done. And I've been so richly rewarded by the many friendships I've made over the years and the support I've received. I've lived in Richfield for forty-seven years and found it a wonderful place to raise a family and a wonderful place to call home. And so it was a grateful heart and very humbly, I accept the Edwina Garcia Community Building Award. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maureen, when this is celebrating. Thank you so much, Maureen. That was a beautiful summary of all of the work that you've done in our community. Does Edwina or does Maureen have the award itself, the beautiful plaque?
Yes. Do you want me to get it?
If it's close by, it'd be great for you to show it. And while Maureen is grabbing that, I'm going to read what it says on the plaque. It's a beautiful plaque, and it says the Edwina Garcia Community Builder Award is presented, there it is, is presented to Maureen Skalia in grateful recognition of your commitments to Richfield community values and to your outstanding leadership and to contributions of the League of Women Voters, city commissions, Richfield Historical Society, Friends of Woodlake Nature Center, Meal on Wheels, and your tireless work with our city's youth. So that's a beautiful plaque. We thank you so much, Maureen. I have the proclamation, I have a proclamation to read, but I do know that there might be a couple community members. I don't know if any of the community members that are here to support Maureen want to share a word or two about her work. If not, that's totally fine. I will go straight into reading the proclamation. Susan Rosenberg, if you'd like to say something.
Maureen and I met in nineteen eighty-two, formed a babysitting co-op, and our friendship took off from there. And she has been a great help to me in, well, when I was running in my campaigns, but also just to help, just to be a part of the League of Women Voters and what we've done together with that. And she's just a really good friend that I can always count on and, uh, we have a good time together when we are together and, uh, and you couldn't ask for anybody who's, who loves Richfield anymore than Maureen does. And so we've been together for a really long time and so we know each other pretty well and I couldn't be prouder than to call her friend.
Thank you so much, Susan, for those kind words. Any other folks that would like to share anything? Before I go to the proclamation and I know council members after will want to share a few words. Okay, I will go to the proclamation. Um, so we did have a proclamation printed out and signed as well. And it says, whereas Maureen Skalia has received the second annual Edwina Garcia Community Builder Award for her commitment to the Richfield community. And whereas Maureen Skalia being her volun-, uh, begin, began her volunteer work with Babe Ruth Little League and later expanded her philanthropic presence in the city as a Girl Scout leader. And whereas Maureen Skalia has been a member of the Lions Club, Friends of Woodlake Nature Center, and Richfield Historical Society. And whereas Maureen Skalia has worked to ensure Richfield residents in need are fed through her contributions to Meals on Wheels. She's been a, a bus drive, or she's been a driver, sorry, coordinator and Board of Directors member. And whereas Maureen Skalia, as a member of the Community Service Commission, led the efforts around the Park Master Plan and later served in the Planning Commission. And whereas Maureen Skalia is an active member of the Friends of the Richfield Band Shell Organization, where she worked diligently with the community to secure funding for the project and currently works to coordinate musical events. And whereas Maureen Skalia has believed in and supported Richfield's youth over the decades. She's volunteered at Richfield High School as office support, um, was a member of the band booster and acted as a parade chaperone and helped a classroom, as a classroom assistant, um, in the Richfield Middle School. And whereas Maureen Skalia is an indispensable member of the League of Women Voters. Over the years, she has served as a member of the Board of Directors, president, moderator of Inside the Issues TV program, coordinated the organization's candidates forums, bulletin editor, and arranged the league's efforts around organized garbage collection in Richfield. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of the City of Richfield, and the Richfield Council, City Council members do hereby award you this proclamation for your service demonstrating your commitment and core values to the city of Richfield. Proclaim this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty-one. Congratulations again, Maureen. We are so fortunate to have you. And I will just say, in addition to all of the things that you've shared and all of the things that I just read in this proclamation, I will say personally, as a, a female leader here in residence of Richfield, you have been a role model for me and so many women, um, young women and aspiring leaders in our community. You've helped pave the way for our leadership and you've helped, um, lead by example and you've really encouraged us to step into our leadership. So I want to personally thank you for being such a great role model, um, not only for myself, but so many of our leaders here in Richfield today. Are there other comments or questions for Maureen, uh, from council? Councilmember Supple and then Councilmember Troutman?
First of all, thank you, Maureen, for all of the things you've done for our community over the years. Um, I can personally speak to, to the fact that you came and volunteered at the middle school and it wasn't because it was your son or daughter or granddaughter or grandson, it was just to help out. And the kids loved having an extra person there and sometimes it was even just if somebody needed a break to go take a walk down the hall and to just have a kind person to listen to. And so I know the kids really, really appreciated it and I also appreciated all your help when you came in and helped out in the math classrooms. And I know you've been involved in so many things over the years and have made Richfield a better place. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Maureen, Simon here. I just, I just wanted to tell you, thank you so much. And for, for folks that maybe have not, have been engaged in Richfield more recently, your work, I got to know you through your work with, uh, the League of, uh, of Women Voters. And for a lot of people who don't know, that is just a, a backbone institution to our city and so many cities. And I'm really grateful for that and, um, I'm just grateful for the, the countless ways that you've shown up in Richfield. And, um, I'm glad to know you and I'm glad we have, uh, an award like this to honor and recognize you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I think I first met Maureen in twenty, I was gonna look up the date, twenty fourteen or so, when she interviewed me and David Gepner for her, uh, League Women Voters Program. Spent an hour talking about biking and walking and what was happening in Richfield at that time. And since then, I've been involved with her as volunteer on political campaigns and the League of Women Voters, um, and on the Band Shell Committee. And what's so cool is, you know, reviewing the council packet before this, I go and I look at this proclamation and I'm like, well, that, that was just the tip of the iceberg. Like, Maureen has done so much for our community, so much that I wasn't even aware of until I read this, despite having seen personally the dedicated work she's put, um, for Richfield. And it's just, you're, you're an inspiration, Maureen. Thank you so much. We are lucky to have you.
Thank you. Thank you. Absolutely. Council, our former council member, Edwina Garcia, go ahead.
Um, Mayor, I just wanted to thank, uh, Kelly Nguyen, because she's been, uh, the administrator of this award and she's the one that's put in all the efforts and, and done all the heavy lifting. So I appreciate, uh, her participation and her leadership too in this, in this effort.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, um, Edwina, for that. And a huge thank you to Kelly. You do such an exceptional job, um, with this award and providing support to, um, Edwina and the community, the nominating, um, committee. Of course, thank you. Any other comments from folks? Well, huge congratulations again, Maureen, and a huge thank you for missing your game tonight and staying here with us at a city council meeting. And a huge thank you to all your friends and family and supporters that were here tonight.
Well, and I'm very grateful and humbled by this award. So I thank everyone involved.
Thank you so much. Great. Have a good night. I will move us to the next item. Um, so we are through with our presentations. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Troutman, I would move the approval of the agenda. Whalen, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Troutman to remove the agenda and seconded by Councilmember Whalen. Any comments or questions on the agenda? All right, looks like we're ready for roll call vote.
All right, Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar with City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. And tonight's consent calendar is quite long. I'm almost gonna have to run through the alphabet here, so bear with me. Item A, consider to approve the renewal of the twenty twenty-two licenses for on-sale intoxicating club, wine, and three-point-two malt liquor licenses. And the license holders are Alte Haban, Fireside Foundry, Frenchman's, Junior Donos, Los Sanchez Taqueria, Linda Smokehouse Pizza, Pizza Luce, and BFW. Uh, the on-sale wine on-sale three-point-two license holders, Chipotle, Devani's, Joyce Pataya, Minnesota Magicians Ice Arena, My Burger, Patrick's Cafe, Red Pepper, and Sandy's Tavern. The on-sale three-point-two license holder is Vena. Um, item B, consider to approve the renewal of the twenty twenty-two for on-sale three-point-two percent malt liquor, off-sale three-point-two malt liquor, secondhand goods dealer and taxi companies doing business in Richfield. Uh, the licenses to operate in Richfield is one, um, Gold Star Taxi, one vehicle. Uh, the secondhand goods dealer is GameStop and Wedding Day Jewelry, or Jewelers, my apologies. Uh, the licenses to sell three-point-two percent malt liquor, La Viquita Shortstop, La Viquita Two, Portland Food Mart, Pump and Munch, Richfield, Minoco, Speedway, forty-one eighty-six, forty-one eighty-eight, forty-one ninety-one, and forty-six fifteen, Target Corporation and Vena Restaurant. Item C, consider approval of a third amendment to the consent decree in the state of Minnesota by the City of Minneapolis at all Metropolitan Airports Commission at all, Penneville County, case number twenty-seven, CV OS S four seventy-four. Item D, consider approval of a second amendment to the agreement with the City of Bloomington for the provision of public health services for the city of Richfield for twenty twenty-two. Item E, consider a resolution to accept one million nine hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars in funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ERPA, grant and a second supplemental payment of sixty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents in additional funds. Item F, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing the Richfield Recreation Services Department to accept the twenty twenty-one roundup donations. Item G, consider the approval of a resolution in support of, for Public Works Safe Routes to School Grant Application to Mindot for the installation of pedestrian improvements on Seventy-first Street near Richfield STEM Elementary and dual language schools. Item H, consider the approval of a resolution removing parking restrictions along Seventy-first Street from Penn Avenue to Lake Shore Drive. Item L, or I'm sorry, item I, consider the approval of a resolution authorizing the, for, authorizing the Preparing for Emerald Ash War Grant Agreement with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Division of Forestry, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Item J, consider a resolution authorizing a condemnation of property for the reconstruction of Sixty-Fifth Street. Item K, consider the approval of a work amendment from Kim Lee Horn and Associates for additional design engineering services for the Sixty-Fifth Street Improvements Project. Item L, consider the approval of a cost share agreement between the city of, between the city and Hope Presbyterian Church for the construction of Public Storm Sewer Act across the church's private parking lot and authorize city staff to execute and record the dedication of a drainage and utility easement over the public storm sewer. Item M, consider the approval of a revised agreement between the City of Richfield and the Woodlawn Terrace Cooperative for the use of four thousand six hundred and ninety square foot strip of land along the edge of Lincoln Field. And finally, item N, consider approval of a resolution for the City of Richfield to opt in to the natural, the national opium aid settlement. So I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez, for that long consent calendar. Um, would anyone like to move the consent calendar?
Hayford O'Leary, uh, move to approve consent calendar?
Councilmember Supple, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary to move the consent calendar and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions on the consent calendar from council members? Okay, looks like we're, oh, Councilmember Whalen?
Um, just briefly, I mean, there's a lot of good things in here. Um, just want to thank, uh, I think the, several of these highlights, the really great partnerships we have with other, uh, levels of government, other organizations, um, and also just really, uh, really good work from our staff and finding, uh, the opportunities out there that would not, uh, likely become a priority if we had to figure out how to fund them ourselves. Um, but are really great opportunities that there's grants out there for and now we have, um, now we have more we can do. And so, um, appreciate the work to, um, make that possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. Other comments or questions on the consent calendar? Councilmember Supple?
Um, I just wanted to highlight that we just had a work session with our, um, representative from Metropolitan's Airports Commission. And that's one of the groups that we're working together with. And so I wanted to thank him for coming to meet with us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Other comments or questions from council members on the consent calendar? Great. Looks like we're ready to take the roll call vote.
All right, Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Thank you. The con, the consent calendar has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is to consider approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending section one thousand two oh two point zero seven of the Richfield City Code relating to license eligibility of intoxicating liquor, wine, and beer establishments. Um, chapter twelve, on the sale of consumption of intoxicating liquor, wine, and beer of the Richfield City Code, uh, currently does not allow a current holder of a liquor license to be issued a second license for a different establishment located in the city. Um, this ordinance amendment would eliminate that prohibition. Um, the first reading happened on, on November twenty-third, at the last city council meeting. Um, do city staff have anything to add on this item?
Councilmember Whalen, I can comment a little bit on that. We went back and did research on this to see where this, um, ordinance subdivision came in. And we went back as far as we could in our archives, which was approximately thirty years and we could not find when this was inserted into that language. So it, it's good that we're making that change today.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, made me think of, I don't know if anyone's a, a Parks and Rec fan, but just recently saw the episode where they're, uh, deleting much more ridiculous things from old laws that they didn't know why they were put there. But, um, always a fan of updating things. So, uh, with that, I will, um, make the motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance amending section one two zero two point zero seven, the Richfield City Code by eliminating paragraph G relating to license eligibility.
Councilmember Troutman, I'll second.
Thank you. The, the motion has been made by Councilmember Whalen and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Any comments or questions from council on the item? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I'm just wanted to say, I, I know this is an example of where we had a, a code that wasn't working for a business that wanted to invest in Richfield and I just really appreciate staff's effort to be responsive to that and our effort to be responsive to them as well. And, um, this is exactly what we want to do. This is what effective government is, is finding solutions that work well for everyone. So, thank you for the work on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Troutman, were you gonna say something?
Took the words right out of my mouth. Everything's been said, but it's not yet been said by everybody. Uh, really appreciate, um, the, the, our staff's ability to, to be flexible and to take, take a, a common sense approach that's, I, I trust a win for everybody. So, thank you, Chief, and, uh, thanks to all our staff.
Thank you. And thanks to the business owner for reaching out and working with the city on this as well. Other comments or questions? Okay, looks like we're ready for the roll call vote.
All right, Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Great. The motion has been approved. Thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, this is public hearing to consider approval of the renewal of the twenty twenty-two Pond Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer Licenses for Metro Pon, Pawn and Gun, excuse me, Incorporated at seventy-five twenty-nine Lyndale Avenue South. On November ninth, twenty twenty-one, the city received the application materials for the renewal of the Pond Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer License for Metro Pawn and Gun, seventy-five twenty-nine Lyndale Avenue South. All required information and documents have been provided. All licensing fees have been received. The Public Safety Director has reviewed the background information and attached documents and approves of its contents and sees no basis for. The public safety director has reviewed the background information and attached documents and approves of its contents and sees no basis for denial. So this is a public hearing. Assistant Wayne, could you read the instructions for calling in, please?
Thank you, councilmember Hayford O'Leary. We always encourage residents to participate in our meetings for both open forums and public hearings. If you'd like to comment live during the meeting, you can feel free to call six one two eight six one zero six five one. And you can have your comments heard by council during the live meeting. You can also contact myself prior to meetings and email me at K W Y N N at richfieldmn.gov. You can also call me and leave a message and have your comments read by staff. You can dial six one two eight six one nine seven one one. Again, if you'd like to participate live during the meeting, you can call six one two eight six one zero six five one.
And I assume no comments have been received in advance of this item?
I did not receive any.
Okay, I'll just give it another thirty seconds before I move to close. Yeah, Mr. Nichols.
Just unmuted here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, it's just given the nature of these licenses, I'd just like to pay my respects to the council and show up. I don't want a situation where the mayor or the chief or any of the council members have questions and don't feel that I'm accessible and can be contacted on whatever issues are of concern. We've been doing this. This is going to be our twenty end, but I'm going to be sixty-five in a few years, and I believe at some point my assistant manager, who's been managing the shop for twenty-five years, will probably take over, and I'm going to drag him along so that, you know, if you've seen people and spoken with them, you feel more comfortable approaching them if you need to, and that's really my only goal here. I don't have any particular statement to make. I just want to pay my respects and be accessible to you should you have any questions.
Thank you.
Pretty much all that. Are there any questions?
Um, I doubt it, but let's just close out the public hearing first and then move to that. Assistant, when we, have we received any calls?
I have nobody on the line.
I, Sean Hayford O'Leary, move to close the public hearing.
Wayland, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Hayford O'Leary to close the public hearing and seconded by councilmember Wayland. Comments or questions on the public hearing? Great, looks like we're ready for a roll call vote.
All right, Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
Ayes all. Five ayes.
Public hearing has been closed.
Thank you very much.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve. I recommend the, the, sorry, Sean Hayford O'Leary move to approve the renewal of the two thousand and twenty-two pawnbroker and secondhand goods dealer license for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated at seventy-five twenty-nine Lyndale Avenue South.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by councilmember Supple. Comments or questions from council? Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Nichols for always showing up and being here because it does make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it looks like we got thumbs up from the council members, but I just always, I want to say the same thing. I greatly appreciate just this little moment of time with you each year, even if it's this for you, you know, just being so sensitive and making sure that you're accessible to our council, to our staff, to our community members. If there's any comments or questions, we're really lucky to have you as a business owner in our community. Thank you for showing up.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council? Okay, we can take the roll call vote.
Right, Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, mayor. This item is a public hearing about the approval of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for Dagobah LLC, doing business as Protagonist Kitchen and Bar, located at sixty-six oh one Ten Avenue South. I believe that is actually, is this not Lyndale? Is that a typo? Lyndale. So on October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, the city received application materials for the new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for Protagonist Kitchen and Bar. All required information and documents have been received. Licensing fees have been paid. The owners for Protagonist Kitchen and Bar are also the owners of Sandy's Tavern. Public safety background investigation's been completed, and the public safety director has reviewed that report. There's nothing that would cause them to recommend denial of their requested licenses. And so this is, once again, a public hearing. As a reminder, the, the number to call in live is six one two eight six one zero six five one. And I will ask executive assistant Wayne if there's anyone who has submitted comments in advance or is currently on the line.
Thank you, councilmember Wayland. I did not receive any comments ahead of time, and I currently do not have anybody on the line.
Well, again, there's a slight delay, so we'll give folks a minute to see if anyone would like to call in and comment. Again, the number is six one two eight six one zero six five one. I'll check again if we had any one calling to comment. No, okay. Then I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Troutman. Second, I do.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Wayland to close the public hearing and seconded by councilmember Troutman. Any comments or questions on the hearing? Great, we're ready for roll call.
Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed.
Then I would make the motion to approve the issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for Dagobah LLC, doing business as Protagonist Kitchen and Bar, located at sixty-six oh one Lyndale Avenue South.
Someone like to second?
Hayford O'Leary, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Wayland and seconded by councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Comments or questions on the item from council? I'd just like to say, welcome. You're already here, but welcome again. We're super excited to have you here opening a second location, and I cannot wait to go visit and tell all my friends and family and community members about it.
Thank you very much. On behalf of myself and my business partner, we are overjoyed with the approval of this, and we are hoping to make Richfield proud with a new restaurant and spot to enjoy some happy hour.
Absolutely, super excited. Any comments or councilmember Wayland?
Yeah, I was, since we have the owner here, was just curious. I know there's already been a soft opening, if you pre-advertising spot, I guess, if you want to share when the, when the full opening will be.
Basically, as soon as our liquor license is posted in a frame in the restaurant, based on how long it took the last time around, I'm optimistic that it'll take about seven to nine days until we have it in-house. So we are shooting to basically open on the twenty-seventh, so right after Christmas.
Very exciting. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Troutman.
Yeah, so, so glad that you're choosing to continue to invest in Richfield. We think you'll find we're, we'll be really faithful and supporting local establishments. For folks that are watching, do you just want to share a little bit about what the food is? Remind folks that it's in the Hula Hands location. Just tell us what's happening. What can we expect?
Thank you. Great question. So my business partner and I have quite a lot of restaurant experience. Personally, I've been, I've been working in restaurants since I was fourteen, so I don't know that there's a job in a restaurant that I haven't had for better or for worse. And we used to co-manage Republic at Seven Corners, and while we were working at Republic together, we really liked a lot of what was going on, and we would just kind of dream about, hey, what would happen if we ever had our own place, and what would that look like? So what we wanted to do is respect and appreciate the the business that Hula Hands was doing and what it meant to the community, and also add our own voice and our own signature to it. So it's, for lack of a better term, Americana kind of gastropub. Some smash burger patties, lots of varieties of salads. We'll have good vegan options, good vegetarian options, rotating soup of the day, great entrees, a thoughtful cocktail program, a well-manicured beer program, while also still having some great, you know, heavy hitters like Coors Light and fan favorites. We want to offer a nice elevated wine offering, and also, again, like just really capture the idea of it's a great spot for lunch, it's a great spot for happy hour, and it's a great date night. Also, we are going to be doing a weekend brunch.
Great. Thanks so much. Welcome back to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Looking forward to it. Other comments or questions from council? Okay, we're ready for the roll call vote.
Right, Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. And councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved, and we look forward to joining you soon at the end of the month.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item goes to councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, mayor. This is a public hearing to approve host designation for the city of Bethel to issue housing bonds to finance an affordable housing development to be constructed by NWF Properties at seventy-seven hundred Pillsbury Avenue South. MF or MWF Properties, the developer is proposing to develop fifty-five units of affordable apartments on a property owned by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, located at seventy-seven hundred Pillsbury Avenue South. The proposed project area includes a mixture of bedroom sizes, two units for people with disabilities, and affordable at thirty percent of the area median income, with the remainder affordable housing at sixty percent of the area median area median income or AMI. Some of the units may also be affordable at fifty percent of the AMI with the use of tax increment financing. The developer is proposing to finance the project with tax-exempt revenue bonds issued through the Minnesota Management Budget, the MMB, and paired with four percent tax credits, TIF, and a land write-down. Developer is asking that the city of Richfield provide host approval so that the city of Bethel can issue bonds for the MWF project. Given the current staffing constraints at the city, the city prefers not to issue the bonds for the project at this time. The city of Bethel has agreed to issue the bonds to finance the project. Approval of the attached cooperative agreement is necessary to formalize this arrangement. So thank you for that, that report. Staff here to comment on the, on the report?
Councilmember Troutman, members of the council, I have nothing to add, but I'm open for questions, and the developer is here as well, as is bond counsel from Kennedy and Graven.
I, I have a quick question. Could you explain, especially for folks that may just be tuning in, why and how the city of Bethel is issuing bonds for a project that's taking place in Richfield? Just share a little context for that, that practice.
Gina, is that something that you could address?
Sure. Sure, councilmember Troutman, members of the council. Under the, so the bonds to be issued by NWF, or to be issued by the city of Bethel on behalf of MWF are tax-exempt bonds under the Internal Revenue Code. The, the developer gets, or the purchaser of the taxes and bonds gets a benefit, tax benefit to purchasing them. And under the tax code and also Minnesota statutes relating to conduit bonds, they allow other cities to issue bonds for conduit bonds for projects in, in a different city, so long as the city like Richfield, which is considered a host, they would call it a host city under the tax code, and as long as they hold a public hearing and approve to the issuance of the bonds.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for that. With, with that, I'll, this is, this is the public hearing, so we will open the public hearing. If anybody has any questions or comments, now's the appropriate time to, to either unmute yourself and participate that way, or call in. Assistant Wayne, do we have any call-in comments?
I do not have anybody on the line, and I did not receive any emails ahead of time or messages regarding this public hearing.
Very good. Well, we'll wait just a couple seconds if somebody wants to. And could you share the number, too, if people wanted to call in? Just share that number again.
Of course. We always encourage residents to participate in our meetings if they've got comments for council. You can dial six one two eight six one zero six five one and state your comments live during the meeting. If you'd also like to have your comments read by a staff person, you can email myself ahead of time at K W Y N N at richfieldmn.gov. You can also call my office and leave a message at six one two eight six one nine seven one one. Again, if you'd like to participate live during the meeting tonight, you can dial six one two eight six one zero six five one.
Thank you. And just to confirm, we have no, no comments? Public hearing? Oh, yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ryan Schwicker with MWF Properties. I have no comments. I'm just here to, if you have any questions you want to ask. Thanks.
Thank you. The public hearing, I'll ask two more times. Any other comments? Any comments? All right, well, I've seen
All right. Well, I've seen no comments. I, um, I would, do we need to move to close the hearing? Or do we, can we just close the hearing? And okay, I will move to close. I would, I'll, I'll close the public hearing, and then I'll make a motion. Um, so the public hearing's closed, and I would move that we approve a resolution providing host approval to and consenting to the issuance, sale, and delivery of the city of, uh, by the city of Bethel of its revenue bonds and approving and authorizing the execution of a cooperative agreement.
One moment. Sorry, councilmember Troutman. Um, city attorney T. Jen, we need to make a motion a second to close the public hearing, and then a motion can be made, correct?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Well, I would move, thank you. Thank you for that. I apologize. One of these years, I'll get it right. Um, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Oh, go ahead.
All right. Hey, for a Larry second, I don't know if that got conflict.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Troutman to close the public hearing and seconded by councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Any comments or questions on the public hearing? All right, we can new roll call vote.
All right. Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary? Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
That's five ayes.
You, the public hearing has been closed. Now you can make the motion, councilmember Troutman.
Oh, thank you, mayor. Uh, so we'll try that again, and I would, uh, move that we approve a resolution providing, uh, host approval, uh, to and consenting to the issuance, sale, and delivery by the city of Bethel of its revenue bonds and approving and authorizing the execution of a cooperative agreement.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Troutman and seconded by councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions on the item from council? Councilmember Whalen and then councilmember Supple?
Thank you, mayor. Um, this is not necessarily pertinent to the financial side, but, um, the actual decision tonight. But while the developer is here, I was hoping to just ask for an update. I know that the, um, the fin- financing changes in the, the state law around certainly the, the TIF, um, portion of finances impacts this. But I, I know we had brought up at the work session the, um, possibility of income averaging, and if that would make possible any more, uh, units at the thirty percent AMI level, um, even if that bumped some above the sixty percent AMI level. Um, and I'm curious if that's something that, that you had explored or have any updates on.
Yeah, uh, it's a good question. Um, so income averaging was passed back in the twenty-seventeen, you know, tax reform, and even to this day, the guidance from the IRS is still not very known, still kind of gray. And, um, we sell these tax credits to large banks or syndications that turn around and sell them to investor pools. And all the banks and syndicators that we work with have told us they won't even touch a project that has income averaging due to the fact that the IRS guidance is not very clear at this point. There's about twenty percent of investors in the market that will touch it, but those investors are going to provide lower equity pricing for the, uh, tax credits. And that will, you know, lower the tax credit pricing, the lower the equity for the project. And that just, you know, kills our project. So we would love to do income averaging. We've looked to do it on other projects. Um, but the investors who ultimately purchase these and enter into partnerships with us don't have an appetite for them. Uh, so we are not utilizing income averaging on any projects. And if you talk to a lot of developers, they'll tell you the same thing. It's not really our call. It's the investors out there that are kind of pushing that. Uh, we're hopeful that in the future, this, you know, IRS guidance will come more clear. But at this point, they won't underwrite or allow us to elect that, unfortunately. So we have explored that extensively, trust me. And, uh, we are in agreement with you that we'd love to do it, but we are not able to. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you for the update. And I, yeah, it's disappointing. I understand not totally your, um, decision. And, uh, this is obvious, again, bigger, bigger discussion than just this item we're voting on. But, um, I do think that we need to, I mean, this is not the first time we've had a, a project that is, um, has significant funding, um, from the city and from other sources attached to it. And the most we can get is single digits of units in that thirty percent AMI range. And so I, I really do think we need to explore as a city more, what, what else are our options there? Um, and if there aren't, like, how do we create some? How do we lobby for some to be created at the state or federal level? That, um, that is, it is not like, uh, it's not giving away housing. That's, uh, teachers, that's PCAs. And so I, I just, I know our, our allotment from the Met Council is to get sixty-some units at that level in ten years. And I've been on the council three, and I think it's all been potential so far. And, um, yeah. So I, I see staff has a comment, but just, it's something the council and staff know. I'm very passionate about this. And I, I just think we keep running into these barriers on this, this issue.
Yeah. So, uh, Madam Mayor, councilmember Whalen, first of all, staff agrees with you. We see the need for housing at thirty percent of the AMI, uh, very low-income housing is the term. Uh, there are very few tools to do that. Uh, at our legislative breakfast last week, however, we did discuss that with our legislators. Uh, we think that a, a great tool to do this would be, uh, tax increment financing, uh, and to have a, a threshold of housing affordable to people at thirty percent of the AMI as a choice, uh, we think would be an appropriate change to the TIF law. Uh, so that is Anne Avenue we're exploring. Uh, housing and redevelopment manager Julie Urban, uh, is, uh, keenly attuned to, you know, what's going on out in other communities, how the, the kinds of tools that they're seeking. Uh, I don't know if, if Ms. Urban has anything to add, but, um, again, um, we're in agreement.
But, uh, mayor, councilmembers, I could just add that, um, you know, the HRA will take up a development agreement on this topic next week. And we, we have with our existing tax increment managed to do five units at fifty percent AMI. And we, at this point, we're choosing to do two bedroom units because more affordable family housing is also a high priority. Um, we are continuing to work. As you know, we had special legislation, um, approved last year. And we are getting much closer to being able to actually utilize that special legislation and free up some funds into our, um, Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And so we would hope to, by next spring, be able to identify exactly how much money we might have available. And then we would look to you to tell us how and if you would like to spend some of that money here, and we could get deeper affordability using those funds. So, um, so more to come. At this point, you know, the basic bond deal allows us to do sixty percent and two units at thirty percent. Adding TIF allows us to get five units at fifty percent. If you are, you know, inclined to, to put more resources into it, um, we could, we could get some deeper affordability, um, with additional resources. And, and we just aren't quite ready to commit to that and don't know those numbers quite yet.
Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to publicly thank the city of Bethel for its partnership and helping us out with this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from councilmembers? Okay. And then I don't think the motion has been made. Is that correct? Yes. Oh, it has been. Okay. It was made, uh, made by councilmember Whalen, seconded by councilmember Troutman.
No, uh, it's me, by.
We have to close the public hearing, don't we?
Don't we close the public hearing, I believe? And then I believe I had made the motion, and then I believe it was seconded, and we are in discussion. We're concluding discussion now. If there are no further comments, and then I believe we'd take the roll, but I would be open to being corrected.
That sounds perfect, Mayor Troutman. Okay, so any additional, um, comments from councilmembers? All right. Looks like we're ready for roll call.
All right. Uh, Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
That's five ayes.
Great. The motion has been approved. Thank you for that team effort. Um, the next item goes to councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is another public hearing to approve host designation for the city of Bethel to issue tax exempt, exempt bonds to finance capital improvements at Partnership Academy. In two thousand eighteen, Partnership Academy requested that the city of Rich, Richfield issue bonds for the charter school located at sixty-five hundred Nicollet Avenue South. But the city was unable to assist as the city was planning to issue their own bonds at this time. Instead, the city of Bethel agreed to issue the bonds, and we provided host approval as required by state and federal law. Partnership Academy is preparing to issue additional debt for its facility and would like the city of Bethel to issue additional conduit charter school lease revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed five million dollars, the bonds, under the documents executed in two thousand eighteen. The bonds are for a proposal, seven thousand five hundred forty square foot expansion to its existing building, details of which require additional city approvals. The request at this time is to approve host approval, to approve host approval only. The city of Richfield is required to hold a public hearing and approve a resolution grant host approval to the city of Bethel to issue the bonds. Did staff have anything they wanted to add before we, um, opened it up?
No, I don't believe so. This is the same, uh, situation as the prior one.
And didn't, did, is there a representative from Partnership Academy here that wishes to say anything?
Hi. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. It's good to see you all again, although virtual, but hey. Um, yeah, we are going strong over at Partnership Academy. This is our twentieth year. And, um, we are, um, loving our new building, but, um, have already somewhat outgrown it. So our enrollment, um, is at capacity, and we are also, um, we have waiting lists at this time in several of our grades. And so this particular, um, addition to the current facility would give us a little bit of breathing room and allow us to expand our preschool program. We currently have, um, twenty preschoolers. We would like to expand that to forty, um, since we have a waiting list about thirty-five students deep on the pre-K list. Um, if that were the case, and we were able to add that preschool, we would be pre-K through eight, about five hundred and fifty students. We're currently at about five hundred and thirty students. So, yeah.
Thank you. Um, at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment, the number is six one two eight six one zero six five one. Assistant, when is there anyone that is on the line currently?
Councilmember Supple, I do not have anybody on the line, and I did not receive any comments ahead of time for this item.
Okay. And you had mentioned that there was a slight delay, so we'll pause and see if anyone has anything to add or call in. All right. At this point, I would move to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Supple and seconded by councilmember Troutman to close the public hearing. Any comments or questions on the public hearing? Okay, we can, um, take a roll call vote.
Mayor, Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
That's five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed.
All right. Then I would move to approve a resolution providing host approval and consenting to issuance, sale, and delivery by the city of Bethel of its revenue bonds. And I, before we, um, go, oh, go ahead. Give a second.
Whalen, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Supple and seconded by councilmember Whalen. Any comments or questions on the item? Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to, again, thank Partnership Academy and also the city of Bethel. This is a great thing to work together on.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I'd like, oh, councilmember Whalen, go ahead.
Um, just thank you to Partnership Academy for being here, being a great, um, partner in the community. Um, and love to hear that you're thriving and growing. Um, so glad to, glad to help out with the administrative side of things.
Thank you, councilmember Whalen. It's good to see you again. It's been a little bit.
Other comments from council? And I'll just end by saying thank you so much for being here as well, Lisa. We appreciate your partnership in our community, and we're glad to be able to support, um, the growth of Partnership Academy in this way.
Thank you so much, mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate it.
Other comments or questions? Okay, we can take roll call vote.
All right. Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
That's five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item also goes to councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is to consider resolutions approving the two thousand twenty-one revised and the two thousand twenty-two proposed budget and tax levy and related resolutions. On September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the city council approved and certified a preliminary tax levy of twenty-five million, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars, which included a levy for general fund operations of twenty million, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars, a debt service levy of three million, six hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars, an equipment and technology levy of eight hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, and an economic development, uh, agency levy of five hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars. Accordingly, the two thousand twenty-two preliminary gross levy represents a four point nine eight percent increase from the two thousand twenty-one gross levy. The final tax levy of twenty-five million, one hundred twenty-seven dollars, four hundred, four hundred, excuse me, twenty-five million, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars must now be considered and approved by the city council. Taxpayers have received individual parcel sp- specific tax notices in anticipation of the truth and taxation hearing. The city of Richfield has conducted and closed its two thousand twenty-one truth and taxation hearing on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. During the course of the public hearing, there was an opportunity for testimony from the general public. Information was also presented by staff regarding the proposed levy and budget. No official city council action to act on the levy was permissible on the day of the public hearing. Included for your consideration for salary in increases for non-represented employee pay plans, the proposed increases are three percent increase for the management and general services and the specialized play, pay plans. The increases are effective the first full pay period of January, two thousand twenty-two. All right. So is there anything that staff would like to add to this?
Thank you, councilmember Supple. I don't have a presentation tonight. Um, you know, we start meeting about the budget in the summer, and there's a series of meetings with, uh, directors and our councilmembers. And so I think this vote, even uh, directors and our council members and so I think this vote, even though it's such a big policy document and our funding plan for the next year can feel a little bit anticlimactic. Um, I would recommend that any residents that have questions, there is a presentation that's linked to the truth and taxation meeting from November thirtieth. So I would recommend reviewing that. I do want to thank our, our director team for all their work putting together the budget and their staffs, which also um, work at putting it together and then also council for all the meetings and um, I don't have any, anything further. I do, I do feel it is a good plan for spending next year and balances well all the uncertainties that we have due to COVID and also reflects our values.
Thank you. Then I would move to adopt the resolutions and I believe I counted one, two, three, four. Thirteen different resolutions that were attached to this. So I moved to adopt the resolutions approving the two thousand twenty-one revised and two thousand twenty-two proposed budget and tax levy and related resolutions.
Whalen, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Supple and seconded by councilmember Whalen. Any comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Whalen and then councilmember Supple.
Um, I just want to thank uh, everyone. Um, as the city manager Rodriguez mentioned, this is a, a long process. Um, but I, I think we landed in a good place. I think uh, to the last point, it, it does reflect our values. Um, especially, I think uh, as, as most budgets for cities do, um, this is, I think it's just over three quarters of it. Um, certainly the strong majority is towards staff. Um, the people who provide all of our city services and that I'm happy to keep um, investing not just in staff existing, but staff growth and um, ability to keep improving everything we offer. Um, I'm also really excited to be investing in technology and updating some systems that are uh, ten or more years old, um, and some of the software. Um, and uh, continuing our, our work on the, the infrastructure of the city and um, continuing to finance that. And so, um, again, would echo if there's residents who are wondering um, what this goes toward, what we're investing in, um, would love to have that conversation. Um, and there, there are some things that still are on the wish list, um, that we couldn't say yes to this year, but appreciate um, all the work staff put in, especially the last stretches of this with a, a short staffed finance team, um, pulling together a really um, really good budget that reflects the direction we need to be going as a city.
Councilmember Supple, I know I wanted to share something and then councilmember Troutman.
I wanted to echo those thanks to staff for all their hard work putting this together and I also want to thank the residents. I know a number of people weighed in and talked about what their priorities were and things they wanted, directions they wanted to see this, the city heading into. And I hope that the, um, that feedback from the residents will continue as we move into the strategic planning process because that'll help for the budget for next year as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to add that that, uh, a recognition of our, of various departments for the tough decisions that they've had to make in this budget too. And sometimes when people see an increase, they just think, well, the city's not making tough decisions. Yeah, you know, everybody gets everything that they want, but um, inflationary costs are real and um, the infrastructure that we're investing in, I think really, really prudently um, at the, the direction, uh, particularly of our public works uh, director and their team to really invest in the, the infrastructure that, that our city will need in the coming generations to continue to thrive. Mean that to, to make this budget work, there have been really hard decisions um, that have been made particularly by our directors and department leaders. So I just want to lift them up in the midst of that process that, that we're mindful of that and I want to share that. Um, good work with our residents and our constituents too.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman. Other comments or questions from council?
And I'll just echo um, the accolades that all the councilmembers have been sharing with our staff and our community. It is always a great partnership between community and staff on these um, budgets. And I think we've just been able to do such a great job thanks to our exceptional city staff and um, the leaders that we have in our department heads in terms of, um, you know, being prudent and, and fiscally responsible and um, planning for a future so that we're able to, to meet the needs of, of the growth and the changes that we're seeing in our community and doing so in a responsible way. Um, so huge thanks to city manager Rodriguez and to all of um, the department heads and all of our staff as well as our community on, on this budget.
Other comments? Okay, looks like we're ready for roll call.
All right, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
That's five ayes.
Okay, the motion passes. The next item goes to councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is to consider a resolution designating buildings located at sixty-five oh one two through sixty-five thirteen Penn Avenue South as structurally substandard within the Richfield redevelopment project area and authorizing their demolition. Um, housing redevelopment authority, HR, the HRA is known, uh, owns the properties located at um, uh, sixty-five oh one, uh, to sixty, or to sixty-five thirteen Penn Avenue South. Uh, two, the two buildings are located on the property. One of the two buildings was recently determined to be unsafe by the city's building official. The HRA has been working with the development team to redevelop the property with multifamily housing. The project is currently waiting to hear if it's been awarded tax credit financing. If the project receives funding, construction could begin uh, as early as the end of two thousand twenty-two. Ideally, demolition would be undertaken by the developer in conjunction with the beginning of construction. However, given the safety issues at the site and the length of time before construction would begin, demolition would take place now. Current, uh, the current development proposal will also require local public financing through the form of tax, but of tax increment. While the housing tax increment financing or TIF district is the most likely tool for providing financial assistance, a redevelopment TIF is a possible option. In order uh, for the site to qualify as a redevelopment TIF district, the property within the proposed district boundaries must be found to be blighted and structurally substandard under the requirements established by Minnesota state statutes. The architecture firm LHB Inc. has conducted an extensive evaluation of the site and issued the attached report, which concludes that the site and the buildings it contains meet the requirements necessary to qualify as a redevelopment TIF district. Attached to the resolution would make findings accepting the result of LHB Inc. report and designating the buildings to be substandard as defined by Minnesota state statutes. Resolution would also approve the demolition of the structures within the proposed TIF district boundary in advance of the creation of a TIF district. The HRA would fund the cost of the demolition. Uh, so, uh, staff, is there any, uh, any, any context to the, to the report as written?
Uh, councilmember Troutman, uh, members of the council, I don't have anything to add, but I'm available for questions.
I, I have a quick question with regards to the, the cost of demolishing the building. Is that something that if the tax increment fin- financing, if they're awarded the tax credits, um, would, I, would the developer then reimburse the HRA for the cost of uh, demolishing the buildings or would the city take on that cost?
Um, that's a possibility. What we will, we may do is, is set up what's called an interfund loan so that we can reimburse ourselves later with tax increment or some other way. Um, so that's a possibility. We also have some funds that need to get spent and we may determine that this is the best use of those funds. So, so we're exploring, uh, we have actually multiple options for, for paying
Great.
for this demolition.
And is it fair to say that those are both, are those mutually exclusive options or they could be both, that we use those one-time funds, but we also have the opportunity to be reimbursed? Could we, yeah.
Yep, we can do both.
Oh, thank you for that.
So, well.
Well, very good. Well, then I would, um, if there's no further comment from staff, I would move that we adopt a resolution designating the buildings located at sixty-five oh one dash thirteen Penn Avenue South as structurally substandard within the Richfield redevelopment project area and authorizing their demolition.
Whalen, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Troutman and seconded by councilmember Whalen. Comments or questions on the item? Councilmember Whalen.
I was just gonna ask, I should remember this by now. I asked many times. Um, what is the timeline on the tax credit decision? When will they find out if they receive that?
So normally, uh, decisions would have been made by now, but I learned recently that they're delaying those to January. It had to do with um, the bonds, the legislature authorized, they, they did a contingent on um, if some federal funds came through, then they wouldn't be spending the state money and so they have to wait till the end of the year to find out if any federal funds will come through. So it's sort of an unusual situation this year, so I expect in January we will hear.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from councilmembers? All right, if we could take the roll call vote, please.
All right, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
That's five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. Um, this item is to consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing the Richfield Public Safety slash Police Department to accept donations from enlisted agencies, businesses, and private individuals for designated uses. Throughout the year, donations are received from various agencies, businesses, and private individuals to be used for special events or programs sponsored by the police department. The donations are for community engagement events and are solicited by the department. This resolution authorizes the acceptance of ten thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars in donations. Um, staff, anything to add on this?
Uh, councilmember Hayford O'Leary, no, I do not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing Richfield Public Safety Police Department to accept donations to enlisted agencies, businesses, and private individuals for designated uses.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions from council on the item? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just, just to say briefly, thanks to these uh, folks and businesses who have donated. It's appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, we're ready for the roll call vote.
All right, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
That's five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item is the city manager's report with city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate Equity Administrator Blanca Martinez-Gavina on her new position as Policy Director for the Citizens League. I'm, I'm very sad that she's leaving Richfield, but I know this is a dream job for her. We will, we will be able to build on the, our equity program on the very strong foundation that she leaves. I also want to congratulate Community Development Director John Stark on his new role as city manager for Saint, North St. Paul. Uh, John has been with the city for twenty-one years and leaves an impressive legacy. In the last decade alone, he has led a redevelopment boom that has added almost fifteen hundred new housing units and four hundred and forty million in value. In addition, he leaves a high-functioning department and leadership team that is ready and able to continue the good work. Very appreciative of that, John. Uh, while we will miss him in Richfield, I'm really looking forward to being city manager colleagues with him. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Any comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, then councilmember Supple, then councilmember Whalen, then councilmember Troutman.
We're all just so eager to thank John for his work. Um, but no, it was, it was such a great, you know, summary of, of all the things that John and the whole Community Development Department has done to see all the progress that we've made in the last ten years and in, in the preparation in the years uh, before that. So thank you to John's, John's leadership. Um, he leaves an awesome legacy in Richfield and a great department. As, as uh, manager Rodriguez said, to continue that work, I'm sure you'll do very well for North St. Paul.
Who was next? Was it councilmember Supple?
Sure, I'll go. Um, I want to thank both Blanca and John. I've had the good fortune to work with both of them and see how that they um, work with others and the great leadership. And since John is here, I just want to do a personal thank you because I know I've worked closely with you on the HRA and the EDA and have been able to watch kind of your foresight and thinking ahead and planning ahead and not being reactive, but being proactive. And that's really something that's very, very important. So thank you.
I will add, thanks, Mayor. Um, I had shared this in the email to, to John as you're leaving, but just uh, you were one of the first city staff people I met long before I was even thinking about running for council and really appreciated your um, openness to just hearing from the community, um, sharing your vision um, and what was already in the works and what you're hearing from community members. Um, and uh, just the, the very tangible legacy that you leave um, of looking around town at all of the different projects that you had a hand in, in helping make possible. Um, I hope you're, you're really proud of that and know um, that and that I think as city manager Rodriguez said, um, another legacy you leave is the leaders that you developed within your department. And so I'm excited uh, that we get to keep working with them, um, hopefully for twenty-one years. We'll see. Uh, no promises or expectations, but uh, just uh, and, and also wish you well, um, in your, your new role. Um, same to, to Blanca who's um, not here, but just the it may not be a, a set of buildings you can go look at, but the, the equity toolkit, um, I think is going to be, I will certainly keep building on it and growing from it, but that it is going to be a key piece of our work and needs to be a key piece of our work um, for years and years to come. And so I really appreciate the contributions you've both made to the work of the city.
And I was, um, I was hesitating to say anything only because this is what I planned for my hats off for hometown hits. So I'm glad to, to, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say my comments for, for, for Blanca Gavina for, for hometown hits. But um, Director Stark, I want to thank you for a number of things. Um, but um, not just your, your, your work product and your legacy of, uh, of excellence in your office, but also I, I appreciate the integrity that you brought to the office and your, your leadership in your department and outside of your department and um, your, your evolution as leader, um, in the years that I've known you has also been really evident. And I think you um, um, you've, you've helped me reflect too on the, uh, on, on the, the distinction between um, staff leadership and elected leadership. And I'm really grateful for, for your, not only your ability to, to see those distinctions, but your lead, your team um, to, to be able to function healthy within elected and unelected leadership structure. I'm very grateful. Yeah, and um, and I know the city of North St. Paul will really benefit from your leadership and experience. And so I'm grateful. I wish you all the best and um, and your, your legacy will be here for, for decades to come. So, thanks, friend.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman. And I'll just um, echo thanks for um, Blanca's work. And even before she was in the position of Equity Administrator, she had been helping lead um, the, the equity
the, the equity work before and leaves a great foundation, as Councilmember Whalen said, to be building off here in Richfield. And then thank you so much, John. We will miss you. We are super excited for your work as, as City Manager of North Saint Paul. We are forever indebted to you for your leadership in terms of helping revive. And as you've said in the past, you've talked about the renaissance and redevelopment that Richfield has gone through. And your leadership throughout that time and helping us get to this place has been instrumental. And I also think about all the great work that you've done to innovate and to respond to the unique and changing needs of, of our Richfield community around redevelopment, around housing, given all the unique circumstances that we have that other cities might not have, given, you know, the size of our city, the fact that we, everything we do is redevelopment, giving the demographics and the changes that we've gone through and who our neighbors are. You know, you've really done such a great job to think about what can we do? What are all the diversity of ways that we can really tailor our redevelopment? And make sure that we're ensuring that Richfield can be a place that everybody can access and call home. And we are so fortunate as a, as a community. You know, that is why we continue to be one of the most desirable communities in the Twin Cities and in Minnesota is in large part because of your influence and your leadership. And the way that you've supported and trained our staff as well to grow in their leadership and to, to share that same vision. So you will be missed. You leave a long generational legacy of tremendous impact here in Richfield. And I'm super excited for you in your new role and your new leadership role and very excited to see what great things that you'll bring to the community. So thank you so much, John. We'll miss you. We appreciate your leadership.
Well, thanks, everybody, for the very kind words. I also want to congratulate Blanca on her, her next adventure. It's been great working with Blanca. I was trying to figure out how many city council meetings I've been to with the city of Richfield. I think it's somewhere between three hundred and fifty and four hundred. And so I've spent a lot of time with, with you all and your predecessors over the years. You, you've given me some very kind words about the, you know, the advancements we've made in redevelopment. But it was, is really the vision of the, of the community that you folks put into policies and programs. And so really the, the credit mostly goes to you folks and to the community for having that vision. I am proud of being part of a team that was able to implement those things. But as has kind of been hinted to before, the, my proudest thing, and they'd asked me this in my interview at North Saint Paul, what they said, if we asked somebody in the community, what would they say your greatest achievement, achievements were? And I said, well, you know, probably like the Best Buy Corporate Campus, leading that project or some of the other redevelopment projects. And then they said, well, what if we asked you what your proudest accomplishments were? And without a doubt, it was that people I work with, like Melissa Paleman and Julie Urban, could, um, could manage and lead those projects as well or better than I could. And I, I hope I've had some little piece in helping them get to where they're at in their journey. I think that the, the future for Richfield is even brighter. I think Melissa and Julie are gonna do, help you do tremendous things for years to come. And I think Richfield's best days are ahead of it. And I would just end by saying that no matter what happens with me, Richfield will always be my urban hometown.
Thank you so much, John. We look forward to staying connected with you and we greatly appreciate your contributions and your leadership. Congratulations. And hopefully you have a little time off in between, um, yeah, to celebrate, rest and relax. So great. Well, thank you so much. All right, the next item is Claims and Payroll. Who would like to make the motion?
Mayor, Councilmember Troutman, I will move Claims and Payroll.
Whalen, I'll second.
Thank you. Claims and Payroll has been moved by Councilmember Troutman and seconded by Councilmember Whalen. Any comments or questions on Claims or Payroll? Okay, we can move to the roll call vote.
Right, Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. Claims and Payroll has been moved. The last item on our agenda is hats off to Hometown Hits, and I'll start with Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Mayor Regan Gonzalez. First of all, I want to say a big shout out to our snowplow drivers and all the people that helped clean the streets and the sidewalks and, and the Public Works Department. We really appreciate it. And then secondly, the Winter and Spring Recreation Brochure has now been published online. So if you want to go to the city website and find out what the recreation opportunities are, you can do that. And there's one more day for the Veep Fund Drive. We've been doing a fundraiser, or a fund drive, like a food drive rather, to gather food for Veep. And it goes through December fifteenth, so there's still tomorrow if you would like to donate to Veep. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Whalen.
Um, the, I had a few things that were already mentioned, but, um, going along with the rec brochure, just wanted to highlight for folks the Holiday Lights Competition, which is always fun, even if you just live vicariously through the photos of other people's grand displays. And then also want to remind folks, if you're around on New Year's looking for something to do, especially now that outdoor events are much more safe, that the candlelight and ice option at, at Woodlake is always a great activity.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I didn't have a very good plan, Hometown Hit anyway. It was just gonna be about the snow. So I will say I neglected to thank Blanca earlier. So thank you, Blanca, for your work, especially taking up the reins somewhat unexpectedly after Bill Green. So I know she's had a great impact on the community and I'm, I'm really grateful for her and wish her well at Citizens League.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you. I wanna, I just want to take my hat off, yeah, and thank my friend and colleague Blanca Gavina for her leadership, which has been tremendous. And people may or may not know, did not begin with her service here in the city of Richfield, that she served as a Legislative Assistant for Senator Patricia Torres Ray and was advocating for Richfield in that role and then in the various roles that she held here. And in taking up the role of working to increase equity in our city. It's, it's not an easy task in a bureaucracy to say, I know we've always done it one way, but I would like for us to consider a different way. Whatever way that is, that's hard work. And she did, she did it expertly and excellently. And our city is so much better for it. And our city as a community and our city as it is a, a, a set of systems and infrastructure in our city government. And so Blanca, we miss you. We're so happy for you and we're really grateful for the work that you did while you were here.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. And I believe Councilmember Supple wanted to add something.
Um, I forgot to mention a hats off to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, who spoke at the ribbon cutting for the Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit and represented us all well. So thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thanks for bringing that up. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. And then I just wanted to check, so analyst, when could you just share? Okay, is this the route information in the rows? Can staff jump in quick and then just explain that, what they're putting in the chat for us?
We did just want to remind residents that, uh, Richfield is putting on their holiday light parade again this year. It was a huge success last year, as many people just needed to get out with COVID happening. So they are putting it on again. We'll have a number of city vehicles, fire, police, our Public Works. I think some of the schools are getting in on it, decorating a bus and, and our recreation department. The route is available if you go to the city website. And they've got that designated on there. It begins at six thirty. It's this Thursday, six thirty P M.
Awesome. Thank you so much for sharing that and jumping in and sharing that. Let's see here. Okay, so in addition to sending off our amazing staff to other places, to new journeys, there was a really great story, and I know that it was posted on our social media, but I just wanted to share it with folks in case they didn't have the chance to see it. So we know that Richfield is a great, amazing community. We are the urban hometown. And that is because we have that sense of community, that small neighborhood community feel here in Richfield. So one story that staff shared with me today and we were able to share on social media was that on December eighth, there was a U P S employee from Bloomington Benton, or Benton, sorry, Alexander. He was on his route and he noticed an elderly woman here in Richfield who needed assistance. She was out in the cold. So he was able to ask her to, you know, come into his U P S truck to get her warm, bundle her up in the cold weather and give her some warm clothes. So he was able to then contact nine one one and he waited for our fire and police department to show up. So our police department later, they showed up and later was informed that the woman had been outside for an extended period of time. She had some frostbite on her hands and her feet. And she also was afflicted with dementia. So she, she had dementia. And we just want to thank Mr. Alexander for his selflessness and willing to help someone in need. Often so many times we are rushing around, not paying attention, absorbed in whatever we're experiencing. And he went above and beyond to notice that something was off with one of our residents and, and reached out above and beyond to support her. So thanks to his intervention with the situation, she was able to get assistance and support and, and make sure that, you know, the frostbite didn't get worse, that she, that she was able to be taken care of. And we also want to thank Officer Wagner and the Richfield Police Department, who were, she was one of the first people on the scene and was able to assist Mr. Alexander and the woman. So a huge thank you to our Richfield Police Department for assisting. And a huge thank you to Mr. Alexander. So again, another great Richfield story. There's so many stories. We hear about them quite often with our police department, with our fire, um, folks going above and beyond to take care of one another and our community of Richfield. So huge thank you to our staff and to our residents and folks in our community. And then we were able to celebrate our, the community service that our staff has provided, who are moving on. So those were the only two items that I had. So let's see here. I think that is it. So seeing as we have no other business, I will adjourn our council meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a happy holidays and a great night.